Welcome to another edition of Minot Matters here at the Dakota brought to you by Shock Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. We are continuing our interviews with the candidates for city council. Today, we're joined by incumbent Dr. Stephen Padrigula. Thank you for joining us today.
My pleasure to be here.
Absolutely. So we get to see you behind the dais every other Monday night. We get to see you there. But that can't be all there is to you. Tell us a little about yourself.
Sure. Originally, I'm from the East Coast along with my wife. We met in college in Iowa where we lived for five years. When I applied to graduate school, UND accepted me and we moved to Grand Forks, lived there for four years, then moved down to Kansas for a year when I did my internship and my wife got her masters in library science.
Okay.
And I was looking for work and wanted very much to come back here. We really fell in love with the state. It was kind of disappointing. Most of my classmates were from North Dakota and they, most of them never got past west past I-29.
Okay.
We made a deliberate effort to see as much of the eastern part of the state and the rest of it as we could. And the more we saw, the more we liked.
Right.
So I had a job possibility in Grand Forks and one here. And this one opened up first. And I remember we had a pretty positive impression of mine. We were coming back from vacation and we stopped here for gas and everything. And we remember driving through into downtown by the Old Town and Country Shopping Mall.
Yes.
It was a beautiful valley. I mean, so much nicer than Grand Forks.
Yeah.
And we stopped downtown. I remember went to the fair building and we were impressed with how vibrant the downtown was. There was a restaurant there. People were very friendly. We thought, hey, this is a pretty nice city.
Yeah.
We ended up living here.
Wow, that's incredible.
Been here ever since. That was in 1989.
So.
No, I'm sorry. It wasn't eighty. I was in seventy-nine.
Okay, but a couple of years now.
It's been quite a few years.
Yeah, absolutely. What is it exactly that you do?
I'm a clinical psychologist. My job is helping people deal with emotional or physical health problems. Help them cope more effectively, help them be more realistic about the situation they're facing, teach them skills, to deal with life's challenges, things like that.
Yeah.
And I've been in full-time private practice now since nineteen eighty-nine.
Wow.
Worked for the, for a private nonprofit mental health center. And then the state took over all of them in the state, which I wasn't really keen on. I stayed there for a total of ten years. And like I say, I've been in full-time private practice for, since nineteen eighty-nine now.
Very good. So you get a pretty unique perspective of Minot through, through your work.
I think everybody's perspective is unique.
Yeah, right. Absolutely. I would agree with that, but you, you like, you get a different perspective than the person that's getting, that's working at the grocery store, that's seeing people in those, those environments. You're getting a little bit of different perspective of people. And I'm sure that probably you're able to see some of the challenges of Minot in a different light as well as the positives.
Right. I'm privileged because I get to see a wide range of people. That was one of my problems working for the state. You just saw people who had one particular category they fit into. And the most of them didn't want to be there. They had run into some trouble with the law or something or social services. It was not a real pleasant place to work, particularly too, in terms of, I don't want to be critical here, but the bureaucracy and, and, and things like that. And I thought I could do it better on my own and have succeeded so far.
Right.
I can be more responsive to people. I can provide higher quality care. I don't have the overhead, the bureaucracy than a big organization has. So it's been very gratifying. And a lot of my clients over the years have been either active duty members of, or family members from people in the military. So I get to see people from all over the country.
Right.
And in my forensic work, I also am a forensic psychologist. I work with judges from throughout the country. I've worked with judges from as far east as Indiana, as far south as Arizona and California. Even worked on a judge with a case in the Northern Mariana Islands of all things, of all places.
That's random.
I see a very broad range of people.
Right.
Throughout the country.
Absolutely. So you have the successful practice and a successful career. And then many years ago, you make the decision that you're going to run into city politics. What was kind of your original inspiration for doing that?
Well, I think there were two things. I mean, the first thing was our alderman at the time got arrested for DUI. And he tried to pull rank on the police officer. He was disrespectful. He was saying, you know, do you know who I am kind of thing? And it struck me as being very hypocritical and very wrong. If you're in a position of power, if you make the laws, you shouldn't be breaking them. And then you shouldn't use your privilege or position to try to get away from it.
Right.
So that really offended me. I also felt, started to feel that maybe I had some skills, some experience that I could bring to the council that other people didn't have. The man I replaced was a retired saw sharpener. There's nothing wrong with sharpening saws.
Yeah.
But.
Very unique.
Yeah, it was, the background I felt I had, I think, was very different. And I felt I could add a lot more to the city.
Yeah.
So that was the, the trigger, if you will. The other reason I ran for city council, besides thinking that I could make a difference and improve things was, and this is a very personal one for, for personal reason, but I ran to repay a debt to this country. My parents were political refugees to America.
Okay.
And if they had stayed in Europe, they probably would have been imprisoned or murdered.
Wow.
So America gave them life.
Yeah.
And you know, that's, that's a debt that I have and I feel I need to repay, you know, by serving my country. Whether it's helping people in the military without attention to whether they can pay or not, or what hours they're available. I come in to see them, or whether it's, you know, trying to apply my skills to, to making the city a better place. But I really feel that strong sense of obligation. I mean, my career is helping people.
Right.
And I think this is simply another way I feel I can help people and bring to bear some assets. I have some knowledge, some education, a different perspective that other people might not have. So I think repaying a debt is, is really important.
Yeah. You've served continuously, essentially continuously since twenty sixteen, there might've been a couple of months in there.
Yes.
Where you were appointed. But what, what are some, maybe your highlights? One or two highlights where you're like, I'm thankful that I was able to work and be a part of this, making this change or whatever might be in Minot.
Well, I think one of them is seeing the growth of the community in many ways. And I think the city administration, city government has basically risen to the challenge. We've started on some major infrastructure projects. We've started on some major community development projects economically and socially. And we've stuck with them. And I think that's very important. It's very easy to walk away from something. We're in, I don't know what year of the NOS project. We have two more years before we probably get water from the Missouri River. We probably have ten more years to finish the flood control project. And we've stuck with it. And I think that's important. We've, we've made an investment in the safety and the wellbeing of our community. The community has become more diverse and I think more resilient in many ways. Our economy has strengthened and grown. We're encouraging entrepreneurship. We're continuing to maintain a high quality of life. That was one of the things I was impressed with when I reread the results of the community or citizen satisfaction survey, was that in thirty of the fifty-four areas, we were at or above cities in our region in the upper Midwest.
Wow.
I mean, obviously there's room, there's room for improvement.
Right.
But in most areas, I think we do very well.
Yeah.
Certainly compared to the country. One of the things that attracted us about North Dakota, for example, was it was safe. It was clean. Didn't have to worry about the air you breathe. You didn't have to worry about getting mugged in the street.
Right.
And if you've ever lived in a big city, if you've ever lived on the East Coast, you know what a rat race it is. You know how hazardous it can be. I grew up in a city where the river burned.
Okay.
And it's crazy.
Yeah.
I mean, every society I know of, every religion I know of gives tremendous weight to the, the healing powers and the life-giving forces of water. I mean, there's something profoundly profane about water burning.
Yeah.
And yet that was the, that was the, the country there. People didn't care about pollution. People didn't care about the quality of the air.
Incredible.
Crime was widespread. Prejudice was widespread. So it's a quality of life issue for my wife and I, having been here for so long. We really like it here. We think it's a good place to, to live, to raise a family. And we've done that. So I think the fact that we haven't blown it, whereas many other parts of the country, I think, have blown it.
Yeah.
One of the stories I told was we were visiting our daughter in Washington a few months ago. And it was, we were walking down the street, right in downtown Washington, and there was something lying on the sidewalk. And I couldn't tell you until I walked up to it, whether it was a bag of garbage or a human being.
Yeah, sad.
Yeah. I mean, I started crying. I mean, it was so horrible that this person was so desolate, probably mentally ill severely, probably chemically dependent, certainly homeless. And they didn't even have the dignity of, of having a blanket over them.
Right.
I mean, it was, it was just a horrible place. I mean, I, I can't live in a place like that.
Right.
Social problems just overwhelming as the, as the pollution problems were in Cleveland, Ohio. So we don't have that here. And I think if you've spent your whole life here, if you've grown up here, I think you might not appreciate, might not realize how good we have it in many ways.
Right.
And I think the first commandment, the first priority is don't blow it.
Right. Yeah. So in, we won't go deep into this. This isn't a topic we normally go deep into. But you mentioned homelessness and we have definitely a small scale.
Yes.
In, in Minot, right?
Yes.
Compared to Cleveland, Ohio. And we also have chemical dependency problems as any society would.
Our fire department responds to two overdoses a day. Narcan is a standard part of the fire truck and the police car.
Does that feel high?
It does. I don't know that it's a problem, but certainly not unique to Minot. And I know, don't know locally, there's a whole lot we can do about it. I mean, we can certainly improve our mental health and substance abuse treatment, providers and services. A lot of that though is privately run in certainly by the state. So I don't know, the city has a direct role.
Yeah.
But yeah, it is high. I mean, fentanyl especially kills a lot of people. I mean, that's, that's not right.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and so it's kind of getting at like, is there, is there a solution? And I agree with you. And I think a lot of people would agree. This isn't a place for the city to directly step into. Even just seeing with, and we can talk about it later perhaps, but with Broadway Circle and the opinions of the city stepping into that matter. And obviously there was a private entity, nonprofit that was trying to take care of this. And just the feedback on that, it's a, it's a difficult subject of how to fix that problem.
I don't think the city's in the welfare business, nor should it be. But I think it, it could do more in terms of coordinating and bringing people together, convening groups. One of the members of the council, for example, informally convened a group of people with interests in disabilities.
Okay.
Improving handicap accessibility, things like that. So I think there are things we can do. We can be a catalyst.
Right.
We can certainly identify problem areas, make sure they're out in the open. And that's one of the challenges living in a small town. People don't often, not just a small town, people don't often want to hear that there are problems. It's easier to pretend everything is peachy keen. And it's not. I mean, it's not horrible. But there are things we can do, both individually and as a community and as a city, I think, to, to improve things. And that's the challenge. And, and part of the, the things I've, one of the things I've learned is, you know, to figure out what you can do and what you can't. And in a sense, to stay in your lane.
Yeah.
Not to meddle in things that you really can't do a whole lot about. But also maybe to have some courage and, and speak out and point things out that aren't right, or point things out that could be or should be better. Maybe you can't fix them, but at least you have a role in shining a spotlight on them and saying, hey, look, you know, could, could we do it better? Could, could we treat each other, you know, more, more, in a more friendly fashion?
Yeah.
Could we be more respectful? So I think that the city has a role in that. I'm very much a conservative. And I think the government should stand up people's lives if it's possible.
Yeah.
But, but I think we sometimes can be a catalyst. And I don't think we sometimes appreciate that enough. And that might be just the thing that gets things going.
Right. That's interesting. I think another thing that's interesting in city politics is like the NOS project. Like how, how long, do you know how, I should have pulled it up, but it came up and I just, it's been going on for years.
Just to make sure people understand, NOS is the Northwest Area Water Supply Project. It's a way of getting river water from the Missouri River into Minot and the surrounding region. We're bringing water as far east as Botno and as far west as what, partial, I think.
Okay.
We're going to be servicing a hundred plus thousand people with clean, safe water.
Yeah.
High quality water. And in some of the rural areas, it is lousy quality water, or you're paying a very high price for it.
Yeah.
And the original idea, I think, started with the idea of bringing in industry to town, particularly industry that's water-intensive agricultural processing. You know, why should we ship beans to Chicago and have them processed there in the well state in Chicago? Whereas it could be done here, for example.
Yeah.
Also, I think we wanted to make it easier for population to grow. I think we, we need a good water supply for the air base. So there were a lot of reasons for starting that, for being interested in it. And then some of it was just rural folks saying, hey, I don't want to drink iron in my water all the time. I want to be able to wash my clothes and not worry whether they're going to get stained or whatever.
Exactly.
With, with mineral deposits. And I think historically, when you look at it, water has always been an issue for the state. There's either too much or too little. And in the case of Minot, it's been both sometimes at the same time. We, we want, our aquifers have been going down and we want to keep a good water supply available. And we've also had the floods, of course. So we've been really stuck with that, both too much and too little, often at the same time. So we, we need a, we need a assured quality supply of water. And I think particularly with global warming, with climate change, you know, people in certain parts of the country are going to be leaving or be migrating. It's part of the thing that's driving illegal immigration into America. People are desperate and it's going to get worse.
Yeah.
And if we have good, clean water from the Missouri River, I mean, what an incredible source, that's going to be a tremendous advantage for our community.
Right.
Both in terms of attracting residents, attracting businesses and industry, and, and keeping all of us safe and keeping some of the social problems at bay.
Right.
Water is, is going to be incredibly more important. It's important now.
Yeah.
And we, we live in a fairly arid part of the country. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't rain here a whole lot, which is one of the things we like.
Right, yeah.
But, but we need good drinking water to support people and to support businesses.
Yeah. It, it's crazy to think that North Dakota is a borderline desert. So, but this has been going on, this project's been going on for a long time.
Years. It's hard to find a specific date. I think it really started in the late eighties, early nineties.
Right. And yeah, and then it, construction began again on, in two thousand and two. I think there's a couple of other dates where it began again.
Right.
But my point of bringing this up is this is something that falls on the budget.
Right.
And it gets, it's a huge amount. And we're like, where are we spending all this money? And some of it's going, that is almost taken care of. It's something that has been part of the plan for a long time and, and we get lost. Another example is the schools in my, that got shut down. That was part of a plan in the long-term process. And we're so present day that we lose sight of those things. So sticking on NOS, I think it's really interesting to hear kind of that background of what it's for, why it's important.
And, and part of it, I think, reflects the fact, one of the strengths of Minot is we care about our rural neighbors.
Yes.
I, and when someone says, I live in Mohawal, I will just say, well, you mean rural Minot suburbs.
Exactly.
Community. We're all one large community. And we have to support the rural areas. And we're funding a lot of the expansion of, of the water piping to those areas, of the pumping stations, the, the reservoirs, things like that. You know, perhaps they should chip in a little bit more, but the point is we're in this together and, and we don't hesitate to serve the broader region.
Right.
And we want the broader region to be, to be secure. That's one thing I've noticed between here and Grand Forks, for example. I didn't get that sense that Grand Forks really knew or cared that much about the rest of Grand Forks County or some of the neighboring counties or some of the smaller cities. You know, maybe that's a prejudice, maybe that's too critical. But here I see much more community spirit. We care much more about our neighboring towns, whether it's rugby or birthhold or, or Max Bass or whatever. And I think that's good.
Yeah. Well, it, it's interesting though, because to think, what is the purpose of Minot? We, we have some defined purposes. We have heavy rail. We have the Air Force Base. We have farming. But farming is exactly what you're talking about. It's helping out the rural community. And when, if you go and even look at Canada and realize, like specifically look at the, it's, to me, it's like one of those like pass-through things. But we, the Canadians enjoy coming down here.
And we enjoy going up there.
We enjoy going up there as well. And so when you look at those things and you realize that that stuff we can focus on to become better at and, and build it, and we are good at now, and to continue to grow, it's interesting to see how Minot could continue to grow and doesn't have to stay whatever size it is. And maybe it's fine for it to stay whatever size it is.
Maybe a better example of rural urban cooperation would be Fargo, where the rural residents are suing the city because they don't want to get their farmland or housing areas flooded by their Fargo's flood protection project.
Right.
We haven't had that conflict. We've worked together by and large.
Right.
And that's a huge difference. We, we have that kind of sticking together as a community, as a broader community.
Yeah. Very interesting. So the, we're in campaign season and I'll ask you about that. That's got to be an interesting time for you.
It is.
But there's been a lot of things that have been said by a lot of people that are campaigning in, for the city council. Seven candidates, three seats, two incumbents.
Which is good.
Which is part of the, yeah, very good.
Have a choice.
Very, for sure. Are you concerned for the future of Minot?
Yes. I'm concerned for humanity's future, given things that are happening. So many people being displaced, the climate changing, you know, global economic problems, certainly the war in Ukraine. I think there's a reason to be concerned about that. The tremendous disparity in, in wealth and poverty throughout the world. And that's one of the things too I like about Minot is that we're a much more homogeneous community.
Yeah.
You know, if you go to New York City, they're extraordinarily wealthy people who live in exceptionally fine housing and drive extraordinarily expensive cars.
Right.
And it, it strikes me as kind of odd. And then you have this guy lying on the street in his, in his own waste.
Yeah.
There is something offensive about that to me, that, that disparity here. I think we care more about each other. There aren't the level of social problems they have in other areas. And I think we have less, I don't want to say ostentatious behavior, but less, less selfishness in some ways than, than in some communities, or at least it's not as materialistic a culture, but in that way.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I am concerned about the whole context. I think obviously the United States faces some issues with the debt, the deficit, illegal immigration, homelessness, drug problems, things like that. I think with North Dakota and Minot, what my concern is more is again, not, not losing what we have, not, not jeopardizing the resources that we have and trying to become a more accepting and inclusive kind of community. We have to diversify our economy. And we work commodity-based economy. It's either coal or ag.
Yeah.
They go in cycles. You can never count on them staying high in terms of the, the income the producers get. It's a very cyclic kind of thing. When I lived in Iowa, the pork producers were in the same kind of position. When prices got really high, they would grow more hogs or raise more hogs.
Yeah.
Then the price went down because there were too many hogs. They were caught in this cycle. And so we're, we're in that kind of an economy. I think it's gotten better now. We've diversified the economy. And I think Governor Burgum deserves a lot of credit for that, along with legislature, in both political parties, actually. So we have more to draw on, but I think still we're kind of prisoners of our climate in a sense. It's a harsh climate. There isn't much rain. There isn't much moisture. We're still predominantly agricultural. The energy sector has gotten bigger. But again, that's a very volatile kind of industry. I was here long before the oil boom started. I remember the oil boom of the eighties.
Okay.
And that brings certain problems to a community, to that rapid growth, some of the arrival of newcomers who don't share our values, if you will. So I, I think stabilizing is, is an important issue. I'm also concerned, to be very honest with you, about the kind of culture of what I see as incivility growing in our country.
Right.
And I think that, that reverberates down here. I'll give you an example. I was walking the streets recently and I came up to an older gentleman who was probably in his eighties and he was on crutches. And, you know, I wanted to greet him. And he scouted me and he said, get the hell out of my face. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't do anything to offend you. I was here to help you. If you'd fallen, I would have helped you stand up.
Yeah.
And we, I see a lot of that, one thing is gratuitous hostility or gratuitous cynicism. You know, do I think everything is great? No.
Right.
But I try to have a positive edge. I try to focus on what we can improve.
For sure.
I think that, that there's a risk of that.
Yeah.
I think one of the other issues we face is that as we grow, our housing stock in some places has deteriorated. I see this a lot. And, and our infrastructure has too. I mean, we what, have five hundred twenty million dollars of unmet infrastructure needs. I mean, that's, that's pretty good compared to most parts of the country.
Right.
But still, it's a lot of money, a lot of stuff we have to fix, a lot of pipes, a lot of sewer lines, a lot of roads. And I think summoning the, the maturity to realize that that's an issue, and then summoning the political will to start doing something about it. So I think facing reality sometimes is unpleasant. And in my profession, that's, that's an issue people often struggle with.
Yeah.
And part of my job is to help them be realistic about it. And then if, if you have a good sense of what's happening, then you can do something about it. But if you pretended everything is peachy keen, it ain't going to work.
Right. Yeah, that's interesting.
So I think being more reality-based is, is important. It's a constant struggle.
Yeah, reality-based. So do you feel, and I feel like I've heard maybe a couple of sides as you've talked. Do you feel that city council, it's typically a nonpartisan position?
It should be, yes.
It should be.
And it is.
It is.
It's no party.
No party.
Right.
And, and that's a, that's a line that you'd stand strong on.
Absolutely. I think we spend so much of our time, you know, opposing somebody or favoring them because of a party affiliation or some loyalty you feel to them as being of a certain group. And I think that really gets in the way of solving problems.
Yeah.
And I'm so happy that in North Dakota, we have no party ballot for local races. You know, I'm not a fan of political parties. I've been involved in some over the years, but you know, nationally, I think they're probably necessary. I mean, you have to recruit candidates. You have to have consistent kind of things you espouse and move forward in a direction. You know, I keep thinking of Jesse Ventura, the former governor of Minnesota. People loved him. He served a term or two and then he was gone. And what's left of Jesse Ventura's policies? I don't know, nobody, anybody knows what his policies are. So you have to have some structure. You have to have some continuity. And I think a political party does that. But I think even in business markets, too partisan.
Yeah.
And luckily here, we don't have to worry about that. I don't want to have to feel obligated to attack somebody because they're a different party or defend somebody's behavior I don't approve of because they happen to be in my party.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd rather focus on the problems than solve them.
Yeah, that's, that's very good. So as perhaps some, we won't go far down this, but feels like this cycle, there's been a little bit of politics I've been pulled into, a little bit of the, the campaign for city council. And maybe I read that wrong, but it feels like it has been pulled in a little bit. Do you, at what point do you feel like that's just too much? And you've already said that it doesn't belong in there at all. But, but what I'm saying is like, should somebody that is a, involved in, take, take, we don't want, I don't want to use any live examples, but should somebody be able to, take Lisa Olson, okay? I think it's great what she's doing. I'm not here to cast stones, okay? But you see that model being duplicated in even some of the candidates where they're heavily involved in parties and then they're running for the city position. Is that something that we should? So that, and to name names other than Lisa, I'm not picking on Lisa. You got Mike Blesson that's involved in other parties as well. So there's a second name. I don't really care about the names.
Right.
Just curious about the principle.
I think that raises some issues. I think you have to be able to step away from whatever party affiliation you have when you, when you work for the city. I think you certainly have the right of association. If you want to belong to a group or a part of your club, that, that's your business. I think actually in the case of somebody like Lisa, I think it would be helpful if she were able to serve in both the legislature and the city council. Because you bring some of one government into the other. And we've had a history of success with that. We've had, for example, Mayor Reiten, who was a very active Republican state senator. And he served the city for years in, in the state legislature. And he also served as our mayor for many years.
Right.
And, you know, he was very open about that. And I don't think he let his partisanship get in the way of being a good mayor. But I think you have to be cautious about that. Are you, are you advocating for the city and your citizens or are you advocating for a party? I don't feel comfortable with people advocating for parties.
Yeah, makes sense. I, I think that really adds, defines that, how, that role of partisan, what it means to be nonpartisan and how that should play at city council. So we mentioned it. How, how has campaign been going for you?
It's been a mixed picture. I, I really enjoy it. I'm, I'm a very introverted person. I may not seem that way, but I really am.
Me too.
And, you know, to force yourself to go out on the streets and greet hundreds of people every day is, is a bit of a challenge. You know, I enjoy meeting people. That's the other side of it. I enjoy hearing from people. And I see it as my obligation to go out and get as much input as I can. You know, I've been very frank about it. Then I place a lot of emphasis on door-to-door campaigning. And it's not just to say, hey, here, vote for me or give them their, my brochure. It's also to listen to them, to answer their questions, to hear their complaints, to offer suggestions. In some way, it's kind of an overlap with some work as a psychologist. You do case management, help people get hooked up with the resources they need or they want. Last time I ran, I knocked on ten thousand doors, literally ten thousand doors.
That's incredible.
And I'm, so far I've done about six thousand. I hope to get to ten thousand. But you meet a lot of people. You go to areas you might not normally go to. You certainly meet people you normally wouldn't run into in the course of your work or your personal life or professional life. And I think it's really, really critical to get a sense of what people are thinking and saying. And I think you get a, a different perspective if you meet them on their home turf. If you talk to them in their living room or at their front door. You know, most people won't come to a city council meeting. They, they feel uncomfortable talking in a group.
Yeah.
They don't want to be on camera. And there are a lot of pressures there. People are often reluctant to speak publicly. They're afraid of what might happen, what their neighbors might say. But I think if you meet them on their turf, you get a side of them that you normally wouldn't. And they ask you questions. There's a chance for a dialogue. That's one of the problems with the way the city council meetings are structured. There's not the opportunity for dialogue. We sit up there and then raise dais, which I didn't like, the architects said we had to have it because that was the only way we could see people and they could see us. But if it's more interactive, I, I think, I think you're, you're, you're really being more effective in your role as, as a government leader. And I, I think we really need to go out of our way to find information from people and to see what, what they are saying and thinking. And also to pound the pavement. I mean, to see which streets are in good condition, which aren't, to see where the streetlights are working and where they're not even there. I think you really gain a lot by, by going out in the neighborhoods. There's still parts of Minot I didn't realize existed that I don't normally travel to. But I forced myself to go there and listen and be open and, and observe what people are saying and what they're doing.
So ten thousand homes. That's nearly half of Minot. Right about, I, one source said, over, right around twenty thousand homes of Minot.
We have like fifteen thousand water meters, so fifteen thousand unique residences. So it's getting pretty close.
Yeah, getting pretty close. It's crazy. That's a, that's a lot of.
But it's fun and it's energizing. And I certainly enjoy the physical activity. And, you know, I like the chance to help people. Again, it may be a simple question, like how do I get streetlights for my, for my neighborhood? Who do I call? Or, you know, I have this problem with my neighbor. What can I do?
Yeah.
Or, you know, why did you guys raise my taxes? Or something like that. And I think we have to be in a position to respond to people and an honest, hopefully one-to-one level, an interactive level.
Right. So that interactive.
Yes.
And, and we've heard that come up with city council, not enough engagement. And you've already kind of addressed it a little bit. People are uncomfortable on those things. I don't know if it's a problem. Like we talked with former mayor Sean Zippman. He's like, yeah, I mean, but let's also look at the, the city. It's up to the city to show up too. It's not necessarily your guys' problem. How is it solved?
A couple of comments. One, I think the idea of having localized meetings makes some sense. Having a Saturday morning session in a coffee shop in such and such a neighborhood. I think that makes sense. I really think city leadership needs to get out more. That includes the council. I, I really do my hardest. We hear complaints that, you know, my phone calls aren't answered or my email isn't answered. I think that's really important. I try to answer every person who contacts me. My home number is in the phone book. I encourage people to call me.
Yeah.
So I think making ourselves available, making it easier, lowering the threshold for contacting us. I think that also goes for senior city leadership, the staff. I think they need to get out of their offices a lot more than they do. And, and be in touch. I recently came across, when I was looking at the management literature, and there's a concept of management by wandering around.
Okay.
And I think that applies to all of. And I think that applies to all of us. There's a similar concept of the ministry of presence.
Okay.
Just being there with someone, listening to them, holding their hand if they're ill or something, for example. And I think we sometimes get caught up in the, in the, the financial end of it or the bureaucracy end of it. And we don't do the, the simple walking out and listening and looking. Even if I didn't, well, I think it's really important that I go to every household, as many households as I can.
Right.
I think if we had local meetings, that would help. I think changing the, the format of the city council might also help. It's even in the public comment period, it's people addressing us and there's not much interaction.
Right.
We've had some positive changes with our budget meetings, which are open to the public. We go out into the field. We look at the public works department. We hear the staff, or at least the department heads. We interact with them. Sometimes we argue with them or they argue with us.
That's good.
So it's, it's a, it's a two way process. And I, I think that's very, very necessary. We've also changed our approach. For example, our public information officer is now the public engagement.
Yeah.
Information officer. And it's her job to encourage more, more, more interaction. We're much more active on social media than we're just a few years ago. We televise our meetings. It was funny, when I first got on the council, one of my thoughts was we should televise our meetings.
Yeah.
And I brought that up to the city manager at the time and he said, I don't want to do that. And the other members of the council didn't seem interested either.
Wow.
So it was like 25 plus years ago, 20 plus years ago. And we've had that for a few years now. People enjoy it. People tell me they, they recognize me or they've heard something or they have a question to ask about something that went on in the last meeting. So we, we clearly have improved, but we still have a ways to go. We also, I think, need to remember that we have representative government. We don't have a direct democracy. I mean, maybe you live in some town in New England where you get together once a year and decide, you know, whether to buy a new snowplow or not.
Yeah.
But we have a representative government. We elect people and then we give them our trust to use their judgment on our behalf.
Right.
So I think at some level it's on our shoulders and citizens shouldn't have to worry about which garbage truck is better, which is worse, or do we sign this contract or that? They should have some trust in us.
Yep.
So yeah, there should be more engagement. There should be much more interaction. We should be going out in the field a lot more. But there're going to be limits on that.
Right. There, there will be limits on that. It, yeah, it would be interesting to have the local coffee shop get togethers and stuff like that. Do you think actually changing the format, which was just recently done really in terms of history, was done around 2017 where we went from wards to outlarge.
Right.
Members, do you think, I'm not saying going back to 14 members because that's just a large council and we run.
That was a wheel. It didn't work.
Right. But going back to a system where it didn't incorporate wards would be effective or just?
I don't think those so, because I think then you become focused on your neighborhood.
Yeah.
And we need to focus on the entire community and the broader region. It's a lot more work. I put in two to three days a week on city business.
Yeah. As, we were talking about this yesterday and, and you're, it's a part time job, which probably isn't even great paid for, a part time job. And you guys.
I could earn a lot more flipping burgers, as the expression goes.
Yeah. And you guys work at least, well, mayor is probably 40 to 60 hours a week.
Oh, for sure.
City council, 20 to 30 minimum. I have no idea. You can comment that better than I can.
Yeah. Like I say, I put in an average of two to three days a week full time for, on city business.
It's just incredible. It's incredible.
That's, that's the sacrifice we make for our country, for our city.
Do you think?
That's the investment we make, put it that way. It's not a sacrifice, it's an opportunity. It's a privilege.
It's a privilege. And I'll put you on the hot seat. I'll make, I'll ask you the hardest question of the day, right here. Do you think the salaries should increase for the city council members? That's, I know that's, it's almost impossible for they answer.
Probably not. No, not especially with the, with the economic pain people are feeling. I think last time it was raised quite a few years ago, it was less than competitive with other comparable cities. I think we're fine. If anybody deserves more money, it's city employees and, and citizens in their pocketbooks.
Okay. Well done. All right. Let's, let's move, well, there's questions I want to ask, but I, I'll ask it, we'll start here. What are maybe the top two or three things that you're hearing from citizens as you knock those 6,000 doors and up to 10,000 doors?
I hear a mixed picture and I think that's where it's important that we had that citizen survey, a nice scientific objective sampling of people. I've been lobbying for that for years. And this current city manager, I think three years ago, finally, you know, got the courage to ask for the money for it and, and we approved it and it ran. Now we have two surveys. We can compare the results. So I think it's important to get that objective data. I think it's also important to get the subjective side, what I talked about earlier. Going to people, talking with them, interacting with them. So I see a mixed picture. I see a lot of people who are very contented with the community. Most people are quite satisfied. I also see some recurrent concerns. One of them is about financial responsibility and taxation. I think the other is about some of the changes that are taking place in our society and wanting to stick with some old values and not be pressured or forced into things. I think that the day to day efficiency of government is a question. People want their streets plowed earlier. They want the potholes filled better. Things like that. So it's, it's a whole mix of things. I think if there was one particular theme, it would be this issue of property taxes. And that kind of disturbs me. I mean, I don't, you know, I, I don't think the government should take your money if, if there's not a good purpose for it. But I think people sometimes miss the bigger picture. Yes, our mill levy is the highest in the state. But when you look at our special assessments, they're the lowest in the state. When you look at all the sources of income the city gets from property taxes, special assessments and sales tax, we're number five out of the 12 largest cities in the state. So when you complain about property taxes, I think that's misleading to people. I think we need to look at the whole income generation picture. One of the other things we haven't paid enough attention to, which I've pushed, and again, not terribly successfully, unfortunately, is making sure our fees are commensurate with the cost of delivering services. Where it really hit me was one time I was riding with one of our police officers. And they stopped a person whose windshield was fogged up. It was in the winter and they really couldn't see where they were going. And the police officer pulled them over. I don't know if they gave them a ticket or a summons. But I counted it. It seemed like a long time the officer was there trying to assure their safety and the safety of people crossing the high, the road. And I looked it up and I did some figuring and it cost us about $23 just for the officer's time. Forget about the police car for litter, get up the gasoline or the computer or the rifle, $23 to write a ticket that was maybe $5 for speeding. And the limitation there was the state set limits. As a city, as a home rule city, you can't charge more than a certain amount. They've since increased those, but we were losing money trying to keep people safe, trying to keep your kids from getting run over, your dog from getting run over by making sure people see where they're driving.
Right.
So we, just a few council meetings ago, the city engineers said that some of our inspection fees hadn't been increased in 25 years.
Wow.
I mean, it's crazy. So one of the things I've pushed for is to make sure that the fees we charge are commensurate with what it costs us to deliver the service. Whether it's garbage or water or planning or whatever. We need to, we need to break even. We need to make our way there. We, we can't be going to a hole.
Yeah. So, so property tax is an interesting one. And it's, and it's no surprise that it's on some people's minds.
It's on a lot of people's minds, including mine.
Yeah. So, and.
I, I got a 10% increase letter myself. My, my property tax went up to 3,800 bucks a year.
And that felt good.
Well, it felt good that I have valuable enough property and I've earned enough over the years where I can afford a decent place to live.
Right.
And it felt good that I can contribute to the wealth of the community. I always keep thinking too, whenever somebody complains about that, of something that Supreme Court Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes said. And what he said was the taxes are the price we pay for a civilized society.
Okay.
And I think people sometimes forget that.
Right, right.
There's a cost to running governments, a cost to keeping us safe, there's a cost to providing pure and safe and clean water. And those are our taxes. And we need to look at that whole picture.
Yeah. And, and I, I think like the unfair property tax, that's something that's gotten a lot of attention because it's currently on people's minds as they're trying to still collect signatures to get on the ballot. And even in that bill, what would become a bill, what would become a constitutional amendment, even in that referendum, it's still not getting rid of taxes.
Right, right.
And that's what's lost.
Right.
Is because of the name of it, it sounds like, oh, we're getting rid of property tax.
There'd be some magic. There isn't any magic.
There's, you're still.
There's no magic.
You're, it's gotta come from somewhere. It's gotta be paid by somebody. And while the state may supplement that, there'd still be fees that would be charged at. And so I think the question on property taxes that I would have as far as like the broad scope of people that are aggravated by it is like, are, do we assess it the correct way? Having these assessments, would, would we be better off finding a different way of assessing property taxes?
That's a state level issue. That's for our state legislators. We have to assess within 3% of what the property is worth. That's the law.
Yep.
You don't have any choice about that. You know, I think there are things we can do to, to be more efficient and effective. There's no question about that. We can always be better. But I think people need to understand too, that we're caught as a city, we're caught in the middle. It's not like the federal government. We can't go into the basement and print off dollar bills. You know, we're, it's not like we're sitting around the basement of city hall drinking Scotch and water and lighting up cigars with hundred dollars bills that we took from the, the pockets of taxpayers. You know, we, we face the crunch too. We live here, we pay taxes here. Pardon me?
Those would be good stories though.
But, but that's not what happens. We get caught with inflation. We get caught with, with supply chain issues. A good example, during a recent 10 year period, the cost of living averaged, went up about an average of 2% a year. City taxes went up 1% a year. So at the end of 10 years, we were 10% below what we would have to kept, to keep even. When I first started on the council, a fire truck cost us 250,000 bucks. Now it's 950,000. We need fire trucks.
Right.
We gotta pay for them somehow.
Yeah.
So again, I think we can be and should be, and we're trying to be more efficient and effective. But we're, we're caught in that same situation the average citizen is and we can't, we can't print money. We shouldn't be like the school board, which has been running a deficit for what, five years or something?
Yeah, far too long.
That doesn't work. You gotta be honest with people. You gotta make your, 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 your bottom line equal out.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So let, let's touch on a few things. We'll start off with TIF.
TIF.
All right. This is a fun one.
Tax increment fin- financing.
Yeah, tax increment financing. This has gotten a ton of attention and now it gets even more unfair attention.
I think the attention is fair. It is legitimate.
But I, I think that, what, what I'm saying with that though is we had fair attention and now with what happened with Epic, or what's going down with Epic, people are going to be see, that's why we shouldn't use a TIF. And I don't know if that's fair.
A TIF is a way of improving the community by giving incentives to private business.
Right.
Minot is one of the few, we haven't used TIFs until like three years ago. Every other city in the state, we're using them. The legislature, in their wisdom, gave us this mechanism. We haven't taken advantage of it. And lately, we're starting to do that. We unfortunately have a bad history of public private partnerships with the parking ramps.
Which is incredible.
That was one of the reasons I won election one time because I, I said, this was crazy. We shouldn't be doing this.
Right.
And we have safeguards in place now. One of the things I pushed for is that we now have an outside law firm in Minneapolis, a big time law firm that is required to vet every agreement like that. There's specialists in those kinds of things. They have expertise that nobody in state here has. We also, at the city managers initiative, are going to be hiring economists to run the numbers to make sure that projects will cash flow, as the expression goes. So those are two safeguards we have now that we didn't have before. I think people also don't, again, see the, the full picture sometimes of TIFs. There's one business downtown that was the beneficiary of something similar, Renaissance Zone.
Yep.
Slightly different programs, different requirements, but basically the same idea of incentivizing people to improve their properties. When they first started, their property was worth $140,000. Now, as a result of those benefits, it's worth 1.6 million.
Right.
We, the money we lost on taxes, we made up for in two months.
Yeah.
In two and a half months, the property tax they're paying now is made up for what benefits they got. I mean, that's crazy to think that there's something wrong with that. I mean, we may have a philosophical disagreement about how much we should incentivize private business. But the point is there are people now that have a good place to eat. When I go to the starving rooster, it's full.
Yes.
It employs a lot of people. There are apartments, there are places for people to live and it gives extra energy, every extra spark to the community and to downtown. And for what? Everybody made money off of that. What's wrong with that?
Right.
And it was public, it was out in the open. Anybody could have applied for the facade improvement program.
Right.
The Renaissance Zone is a little bit more limited because it's in a certain geographic area, but even that's enlarged. And there was recently a Renaissance Zone application that was approved for improvements on a house.
Wow.
So that's not just open to commercial enterprises, also open to homeowners.
That's crazy.
And we need to maybe get the word out more and get more people involved in that.
Hey, we're trying here.
I know.
You are. So we, so TIF, we see the Big M building that I think that it's fair to say that that would be something that deserves it. It, it meets all the checkpoints of a blighted building.
The issue there too, is that it's been empty for 25 years. I had my office in there for a few years. Wonderful place, greatest view. The people who owned the building Midwest Federal, they were princes to deal with. They were wonderful landlords. Their maintenance crew would come wandering around looking for trouble, looking for things that were wrong.
That's neat.
You know, it's not, it's not like some big city, we have to fill out a requisition and wait three years and they charge you a hundred bucks for changing a light bulb. It's not like that at all.
Right.
It was a beautiful place and it's, it was like really the cornerstone or the keystone of downtown and the community. You can see it from anywhere.
Right.
And it, it wasn't a viable commercial enterprise. The problem is that it was full of asbestos.
Yeah.
And if it had gone back to the county on taxes, it would have cost us a minimum of $3 million to get out the asbestos before we could tear it down or sell it.
Right.
So giving them a TIF to help pay for that, it didn't come, there wasn't anything extra. We would have had to pay that money anyway to demolish.
Right.
As a, as a prelude to demolishing the building. So I, I think that's very well justified.
Exactly. So then the, the counter one that we always bring up on the podcast is the Trax, same company that received the TIF. Do, do we feel like they are deserving, that is deserving of the TIF the same way that the Big M is?
I'm not sure deserving is the right way to look at it. I think they meet the criteria. One of the things they pushed heavily was they're a local company. Most of their investors, their upper management is from Minot. If you can't trust your friends and neighbors, who can you trust? Were they a little bit overly ambitious? Perhaps.
Right.
But I think the idea of, you know, giving them a TIF for floors one through three and not four to six is crazy. It's a whole project and I think you look at it that way. I think that project as a whole makes sense. It adds to the community. It adds value to the tax base. It gives more people a place to live. It provides amenities like a skating rink or whatever they were planning.
Right.
A concert venue. Those are the kinds of things we need. And if we need to give incentives to businesses to have those happen, I think we do that. As long as it's out in the open, as long as there are no conflicts of interest. You know, and as long as other people put up cash. So that's one of the changes I think that I've seen, that's been a very good one in economic development, is we're partnering much more with other organizations. The Bank of North Dakota, the Department of Commerce, private banks and, and savings and loans. It's not longer, no longer us with this bag of money that we give you for some reason. And we've really tightened up the enforcement. We've really been much more careful in making sure that companies are, are providing what they say they will, whether it's extra jobs or some level of paychecks or whatever. So yeah, will there be failures? Of course there will be. But we're minimizing the odds of those. And I think we really do need to incentivize private enterprise.
So, so TIF, and this is, correct my understanding, okay? Cause my understanding is that it's more for development on an existing project. That's where a TIF should be, is more applied to. So what I'm saying is like the Big M building, an existing building where it's like, hey, this is rundown, nothing's going on here. Let's go ahead and give an investor an incentive to bring this up to speed so we don't have to tear it down.
Right. I think that's more for Renaissance. I think Renaissance zones are more revitalization, Renaissance rebirth.
Yep.
Revitalize something.
So, so TIF can be used for more any type of project.
I believe so. It, it gets very complicated very quickly. That's why we hire staff. The regulations that they deal with in the Housing and Urban Development Program are 35,000 pages. The federal government puts that on us. I don't know what they are, but we hire people who do know what they are and make sure they're implemented.
Yeah. So, so do, do you feel just a cut and dry answer? Do you feel like property taxes are truly a problem in Minot that needs to be addressed?
I think they're a problem everywhere. I really am sensitive to the argument that they really disadvantage people who run a fixed income. We need to be cautious. And we do have state programs that at a certain income level, there will be a credit for that. The state will come in and the state also is giving each of us $500 who filled out this form online on next year's taxes.
Right.
So I think we have to be very careful about that. But again, the thing to me is to have a balanced stream of income. So nobody gets soaked. There's no taxation system that's perfect. Everybody at some point will dislike part of it, but you try to find a reasonable compromise. And that's one of the things I've learned in, in 16 years on the council is that it's really hard to weigh all these things. And you need to have some judgment. You need to be able to step back and look at the bigger picture. Nothing will be totally acceptable to everybody. You try to find the best compromise that you can. And I think if you even the burden, if you will, if you spread it out among everybody in the community, I think that's the fairest way overall.
Yeah. No, and I appreciate, it seems like there's been times on council where you have voted for something where, because you felt like you doesn't, you didn't necessarily agree with it, but you felt like it was the best thing.
Right.
And, and I think that's something that's respectable.
When I was a kid, we read Candide's Voltaire in school. And one of the famous lines from there is that the eternal optimist, I think his name is Pangloss, says something like, this is the best of all possible worlds. And I thought that was the craziest thing. I mean, with suffering, homelessness, crime, wars. Who, who the heck could say that?
Yeah.
But the older I've gotten, the more I've come to realize that maybe that isn't so crazy after all, that you know, when you balance people's free will, when you balance everybody's somewhat different interests, maybe this is the best we can do. And that's part of the reason I haven't gone through the city budget line item by line item, saying, you know, what's this, why that? I mean, at some point you have to trust people you hire. And at some point you strike compromises. And you could make a strong case for taking out something or adding something else in and you balance. I think that's where the judgment, the experience, hopefully some sense of wisdom, some sense of perspective comes in. And I've been around a long time. And I think that gives me a certain level of experience, a certain perspective that other people might not have. And it, it helps you realize the necessity of striking compromises.
Yeah.
We don't get everything we want in this life.
Absolutely. One of the things that have been a priority for some over the last few years is growth. And we've seen growth overall. We have Popeyes now. We're hopefully a Chick-fil-A coming down the.
Chicken person, so.
Okay, there you go. But.
I appreciate that people are, and that's good. They have that opportunity.
Right, right. Absolutely. But we haven't grown much in population over the last 10 years, say.
I think it's gone up like 12,000 in the past 20 years or something. It's been, it's been, it's been a, a good chunk. It's been a slow but a steady growth. And I think that's what you want. You don't want the meteoric growth, for example, Williston has had.
Right.
Or maybe Watford. You want a slow progress because then you can keep the social problems. You want a slow progress because then you can keep the social problems under control. You can keep the crime under control. You can build out the infrastructure. You can get people a chance to know each other and, you know, become more of a community. So I think slow and steady is the way to do it.
Right. I, I would agree with that, but I think over the last, more recently, I think that, and maybe I need to look at numbers from a better source, but it feels like the growth has plateaued some.
Yes. I think we lost two hundred people last year. Out of forty eight thousand, two hundred is insignificant.
Right, yeah.
If it becomes a trend, if we lose two hundred every year, then, then we have an issue.
Big problem, right. And I have seen numbers and going back like four or five years, we've been right around the forty five to forty seven thousand range in population.
Pushing fifty.
But the, the question comes down to what are areas that we should be looking for, for growth in the next five years, ten years?
Well, I think the growth needs to come in terms of quality of services and quality of life, not so much population. I think it'd be nice if we could grow the economy, if we could generate more sales tax, if you will, so we can pay for things like fire trucks and firefighters and police officers. But I think quality of life is the big issue. More amenities, more fitness paths, you know, better school buildings. You know, better public safety services, things like that. I think we're a reasonably prosperous community. Could we become more prosperous? Probably. I think we need to encourage entrepreneurship more. I think we need to encourage people taking risks. But I'm not, I'm not enamored of growth for the sake of growth. I think we need to be careful not to overextend the city limits. We don't have to stretch out our, our water mains and sewer lines. I think we need to infill the areas and the city administration's done a good job, I think, of trying to encourage that. So I, I think again, slow and steady growth is what I would be looking for. And we've seen, we've seen neighborhoods, particularly on the northwest side, that have just sprung up out of nowhere. Last time I campaigned in one neighborhood, there were like four homes. Now there's like maybe a hundred. And that's good to see. Children are playing, families are having fun. People are earning a good living. People are driving fancy pickup trucks.
Right.
Yeah, that's good.
North Dakota life right there. That makes sense. A steady growth. Do you feel like we needed to diversify our industries more or anything like that? Or we, we're pretty solid?
Really hard. We've tried with the Magic Fund. I think we need to maybe orient a little bit more towards some of the high tech stuff, but the risks are really, really pretty significant there.
Yeah, we've seen that already.
Industries have always been and probably always will be agriculture and energy. Maybe moving more towards some of the higher tech energy stuff, some of the more photovoltaic type things. There's a market for more efficient use of energy, improved transmission lines, don't, don't waste as much energy in moving electricity long distances. I think the, the big thing would be to encouraging homegrown businesses. People who have good ideas and maybe need a little bit of financing at good terms. Maybe need some mentoring, maybe need some encouragement. And I think that's where the city can play a role. So I'd like to see us grow our own more and focus on that. And if we can land a big plant, that'd be fantastic.
Let it happen.
But there are also problems that come with it, like traffic and things. And if you become too reliant on one industry, that becomes a real risk. So I think slow, steady, diversified growth with more of an emphasis on homegrown businesses and entrepreneurship.
One of the things that you have alluded to and that you have been very focused on, and I think is a good thing, is that city satisfaction survey.
Yes.
Going to draw three points from it. You've probably heard them already, but we'll talk about them one more time. We've already talked about Minot being a safe place. On the, on the satisfaction survey, forty four percent felt Minot is becoming less safe. Is this, this, should this be a concern for Minot citizens? And how can it be addressed, do you see?
Well, one way it can be addressed is getting more aggressive in terms of recruiting public safety personnel. Our fire department is finally fully staffed. What we're going to face is the fact that a lot of our senior leadership will be retiring in the next few years. And we need to develop career ladders so our firefighters develop more skills, get more education, get more training. That's going to be an issue and we need to keep the people we have. The biggest problem I think is in terms of police. The salaries are not that big of an issue. The salaries are reasonably comparable for Bismarck Police Department versus Ward County sheriffs versus Minot. The problem is in terms of benefits. We don't pay as a city for family health insurance. That's three hundred fifty dollars a month. So your salary may be the same, but you become, if you become a deputy for Ward County, you're earning three hundred fifty times twelve extra. And that's a lot of money for a lot of people. And the people generally who's, who go in to or at least stay in public safety tend to be family oriented, fairly traditional people. So that's a real, real hit on them. So I think making sure the benefits and the salaries are comparable, but I think a lot of it is improving morale and satisfaction. We're, last month, we were at seventy eight percent of assigned staffing for police. Now, the study we commissioned had some suggestions for becoming a little bit more efficient, using civilians more effectively. And there's also, there's a whole list of things, like thirty of them that we could do. But the big thing is realizing that we need more police. A lot of times there are only five or six officers on the streets. I mean, that's pretty scary. And for every person who says, look, you know, my taxes are too high, there's another person who says, look, there's somebody speeding down my street. I'm afraid they're going to run over the neighbor's kids or my kids. Could you put a police officer here? Yeah, I can. But that means some other neighbor doesn't get that. And I've done a lot of crisis intervention work as a mental health professional. When I go on the streets, when I go to somebody's house, if there's a domestic violence institution or whatever, I want a police officer next to me. And at night, if there's a traffic stop, we send two officers. So two traffic stops, we have four tied up. Somebody's burglar alarm goes off and somebody's business, another two. And we're maxed out. We don't have the reserve horsepower that we need to, whether in terms of fire. Thirty percent of the time, there are two fire calls simultaneously. Now, do you need seventeen firefighters at each call? No, probably not. But you need to have some reserved capacity and we don't have that at all. We're skating really, really thin. So I think improving our public safety person power, manpower, if you will, is really, really important. I think improving morale. That's been an issue and we need to take that more seriously. You know, comparable wages and benefits, I think is an issue. I think part of it isn't the city's responsibility as much as it is citizens' responsibility for kind of taking care of their neighbors. You know, if you see something, say something kind of thing. Making sure that the quality of life is strong and families are strong and those social networks, whether faith communities, whether businesses, whether people socializing are strong. I think that's going to be in the long run, probably when the best crime prevention measures we can take, when people are watching out for each other, when they care for each other. So, and, and trying to address some of the social problems. And again, lobbying at the state and national levels in terms of drug issues and things like that. You know, I think we have it good, but it can be better and we need to be vigilant constantly to make sure it doesn't collapse, which is very easy to happen. If you've ever lived in a big city, you know what that's like. The broken window theory. Once the first window gets broken, it's so easy for more of them to be broken. And the thing to spiral out of control and then you can't fix it.
Yeah. I mean, I'm originally from Oregon and every once in a while we go back and visit and been gone for fifteen years now. And it's just interesting as over time you go back every couple of years and you see parts of Oregon suffer a little bit and it is sad.
And Kristoffa, columnist for New York Times, has written very eloquently about this. He grew up in a small town in Oregon. And he goes back and a lot of the people graduated from high school with are dead because of drug overdoses. It's a, it's an, become an impoverished community you grew up in. And he writes about this in a very feeling, moving fashion. So I can empathize with that.
So another thing that came up on the city satisfaction survey was we've already talked about this a little bit, concerns about the involvement of the public in decision-making. Only eighteen percent feel they are satisfied with that. What you, we mentioned the coffee shop get together. What needs to be changed in that involvement? Is that something where the community just needs to be more engaged? Or do they need to feel heard? How, how do we?
Again, we have a representative kind of government. And I think the representatives need to get out more. Wish Aldo, Aldo, Alderman would go out. I don't know how many times I've been to a house and they've said, hey, you're the first person who's ever come to my door in the twenty five years I've lived here.
Yikes. It's not right.
Right. So I think that kind of personal investment, personal commitment and part of city leadership is really important and that's where it starts. I like to walk. I get tired. It's hot sometimes. I've come close to kind of passing out because of the heat. So I'm trying to be more careful now as I've gotten older. But I think it's something we need to do. We need to take personal responsibility. We need to show the initiative. And we need to make sure again that, that the staff are out there too, that they aren't just sitting. And again, I'm not being critical of them, but there's a tendency in any organization to kind of stay with what you have and be in your quote comfort zone. And we need to get out more often. I think we've done a good job in terms of the media, in terms of our public information officer, public engagement officer. You know, I think people can show up and, and, and they need to show up. But, but again, it, it's not their fault if they don't.
Yeah, it's very good.
We still need to run the show. We still need to listen to them and, and, you know, exercise our best judgment.
Right. Third thing was respondents indicated the biggest issues facing Minot within the next five years include high taxes, property taxes, finances. That's eighty percent. Housing affordability was sixty one percent, crime was fifty one percent. Do you see, do you feel like those three things that the community brings up as concerns within the next five years, do you agree with those?
I think they were reasonable concerns. I guess I would try to provide some context about the tax thing. There was recently a survey about taxation of all kinds in the United States. North Dakota is forty third out of the fifty states in terms of tax burden. And I use the word burden advisedly. If you think taxes are high, they may be higher than you'd like. They may be higher than I would like, but they are not high. That's the reality. We're forty three out of fifty. Unless you've lived in a place like New Jersey or New York or California, you have no clue how horrible it can be. And that doesn't justify inefficiency. That doesn't justify us not trying harder. We should be more efficient. But, you know, the reality is it's not a high tax state and government costs money. We don't, we can't create money out of magic. We can't create it out of thin air. So I think, I think that's an issue. That's a constant issue of, you know, being as efficient and frugal as you can be. I've still in many ways been influenced by a person I encountered and interacted with quite a bit when I first got on the council. He's an old Realtor in Minot, Earl Allen. He had a reputation as a firebrand. He was an arch conservative. He was, I guess there were some questions about how appropriate he was as a, as a property owner, but he owned a lot of properties. And he always would come to us and he always would harangue us about, you know, how much money and it's coming out of our pockets. And I was a bright, young, idealistic psychologist, wanted to help people. I thought government could do these things. And Earl Allen was right. We have to be frugal. And he would wave his finger at us and, and he would speak in aphorisms, all these things that like, there was some Zen saying I didn't quite understand. But his point was you, you gotta, you gotta be frugal. And he's right. And I've tried to, to remember that. And I, and I remember that. I don't think a couple of days go by without me thinking, what would Earl Allen say?
Right, yeah.
And I think that's a criterion. You, you have to justify your spending and it has to, it has to be effective. And if you want, I can give you a list of things that I think we could do to improve. But the point is I think that is a very legitimate concern and it should be a concern. In terms of the public safety issue, again, crime nationally has been going down, but that's not the perception of people. And even the crime we have, I think is way too much. Luckily, we're a pretty safe city. But, you know, I think the biggest public safety hazard really is, is the drug overdoses. More people die of that. So, you know, I, I think there are legitimate concerns and we need to stay on top of them. But we also need to keep the broader picture and the sense of perspective on how bad these really are. Or how bad they could get and they haven't gotten yet and shouldn't get ever.
We had a spree, it felt like spree of shootings and stuff like that that happened in the last year. And I, I'm sure that played a lot into that, that survey. And that's hopefully is an outlier because it's not something that's happened a lot over the last fifteen years.
And I think most of it is, you know, I want to be careful not to be prejudiced here in any way or discriminatory, but most of it I think is drug related. You know, if someone steals my car, I can go to the police and say, hey, somebody stole my car. Please find them, give me back my car. You know, if someone steals my bale of marijuana, I can't go to the police and say, hey, somebody stole my marijuana. You know, there's an incentive for me to have a gun and protect my, my stash of marijuana and shoot it out with the person who wants to steal it. Or who's muscling in my territory if I'm a drug dealer. So unfortunately, once that culture gets started, once that illegality gets started, it's really hard to put a stop to. And we have, again, not to be prejudiced, but we have people coming in from other parts of the country where crime and organized crime and drug dealing are, are a lifestyle prevalent. And we have to be very cautious about that. You know, again, we can't discriminate against people, but there are outsiders, if you will, coming in. And, you know, we, we have to monitor things. We have to be aggressive with our prosecutions. We have to have cops out on the streets.
Absolutely. Well, June eleventh is going to be a big day for you. Election day, it'll be a day. When somebody goes to the polls or to the voting offices, wherever they're voting at on, on June eleventh, why should they vote for you?
I would ask for their vote. I would, I don't think people should vote for someone. I would ask for their vote. I see it as a privilege to serve the city. I think I've established a track record of being open minded, of working hard. In my first term on the council, the Minot Daily News said, I might very well be the hardest working council member. They also said that I asked the tough questions and I think it's important to ask tough questions. So I think what I bring to it and why I would ask for their vote is my loyalty to the city, the commitment I've put into it over sixteen years. My experience and hopefully some sense of judgment, some sense of discretion, some sense of discernment, even in the, in the theological sense of stepping back and looking what's best for the entire community, not just now, but into the future. Not just looking at the wallet or pocketbook, but looking at the quality of life for our community. Again, the experience, hopefully the judgment that comes with that and the sensitivity to different people and wanting to help them, wanting to help achieve a better quality of life. I guess I'm reminded of something that still guides me. It was a, it was a motto that our, our school had, the one I attended. And I think it's a very fitting motto. I'll make sure I get it right here. That the better self shall prevail. And each generation introduces successor to a higher plane of life. That's been my motto, I think, too. And I do everything I can to, to live that motto and to, to help other people progress in that kind of a fashion as a society, as a community.
Yeah, very good. Well, I really appreciate you coming on today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
If someone wanted to support you, do you have a Facebook page or anything like that that they can reach out to you on?
I'm old fashioned. They can call me.
There you go.
Or they can talk to me if I stop at their house, or they can write me a letter or send me an email through the city system. The best thing is to, to interact. Just give me a phone call.
Sounds great. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
This has been another edition of Minot Matters here at the Dakota brought to you by Shock Safe and Lock. I'm Jonathan Starr. We, this is a series, be sure to go back, watch all of our candidate interviews. So that way you can be an informed voter on June eleventh, primary day, get out and vote for your city elections. Be sure to follow us on Facebook, like and subscribe on YouTube, become part of the Dakota community. Thank you for watching this video. Have a great day.